Okay, all right, we will be calling the June 27, 2022 meeting back to order. And so, well, Christina, you have your mask on, but would you like to lead the pledge of allegiance? Thank you. All right, thank you. Our special presentation tonight is our hospitality industry update, and I'd like to invite forward Scott Drink to give us a little bit of information from Visit Dublin. Welcome, Scott.
Hello, Mayor, thank you. Good evening, thanks for the opportunity. If I may, Mayor, I'd like to introduce your two city council representatives that are here today. I'm on our board, Betty Clark, and, excuse me, Sharon Baker McGee, and then our board president, Jalen Rossett, from Cardinal Health. So, let's get right to it. Give you an update on where we are kind of mid-year. Bed tax is up 91% this year versus the same period last year. We're still down about 23% of where we were pre-COVID in 2019. If you look at our hotel occupancy rate, we're only half-full right now, just over 50%, 52%. If you remember, just a reminder, we have 18 hotels in Dublin, 2,300 rooms. Our 19th hotel opens next week, next month at Doubletree, so that'll be our 19th hotel as well. So, you can kind of see the big jump. If you look at where we were pre-COVID, a 27% decrease is substantial. The data shows us about every percentage point annually equates to about $1.5 million annually of economic impact, so we have a ways to go when it comes to that as well. So, why are we up 91% in bed tax, but we're only half-full with our hotel rooms? Here's the big reason is rates. A tremendous jump, and you're seeing this, I'm sure, in your travels across the country, inflation, but to have a $28 increase year over year is unheard of. I mean, typically, we see in a non-COVID timeframe, maybe one, two, three bucks here and there, 28 is unheard of. So, that's the reason you're seeing such a big increase there. I can tell you, too, in May, our average rate was another record, $132 is what people paid on average at a Dublin hotel. So, rates are astronomical, which is good for us in terms of bed tax, but just not sustainable in the long term. I can give you a couple of updates on hotels, trends. We're seeing booking patterns being much shorter. Typically, when we send out a lead, it's between nine and 12 months. It's one in three months now. Meetings are smaller, 50 or less. A lot of day meetings, not a lot of overnights, a lot of food and beverage and days and stuff as well. As everyone else, workforce is an issue, so front desk, salespeople, so we have customer service issues that we're dealing with everywhere as well, so that's a concern. I can tell you, too, the hotels are concerned about the third and fourth quarter. Once, as gas prices continue to increase, school, people go back to school, leisure market dries up a little bit, they're concerned of what the rest of the year might look like on that. To talk about markets in general, we've talked about the corporate market and what an impact it has had on our city. That's always been our bread and butter in this community. That is still slow-going. We don't believe it'll ever reach the levels it was pre-pandemic. There's a new world out there, people communicating, so it's just not going to happen. But I can tell you, too, from a leisure market perspective, that's what's really saved us during this pandemic. I can tell you, especially this summer, I think we're going to see record numbers of leisure travelers into Dublin this summer through the end of August. So, that's a great thing as well. I think in part to the regional campaign that all of you helped fund, and Dana, with your support, thank you. We wouldn't have been able to do that. We've extended the reach and extended the length of our campaign, thanks to your support. It now starts in April, and we'll go through November to kind of catch those shoulder seasons off of the spring and fall shoulder seasons as well, so we're doing that, which will be helpful. I won't get into the weeds on our regional campaign, but one thing that's been very successful is our streaming advertisements online. We're seeing networks of television streaming online at Hulu, Netflix, Disney, and all those markets you see there as well, so it's been very successful. We have a lot of metrics when it comes to this campaign, but one of the big one is 15 million impressions. We're pretty confident we'll reach that by the end of the year. Our Ferry Door and our Celtic Cocktail, again, are two trails that are doing extremely well-generating business for our local businesses here in town. The Ferry Door Trail now has 11 small businesses in downtown Dublin. Up to 10,000 people have enjoyed that trail. Each one gets a shirt that we provide, so you may see shirts all over town doing that. I can kind of break out, we track all those people that are going those trails. 75% of those people are Ohio residents, so that 75, about 20% are Dublin residents that are participating in this trail. The other 25% are coming from roughly 28 states, I believe, with Indiana and Pennsylvania being the two most popular states. So, the Ferry Door Trail continues to generate business for the small businesses in downtown Dublin. Celtic Cocktail Trail, again, we have 18 restaurants, that's across the entire city, that's generating business there. We have 22 active participants. That takes a longer time than you would expect. You know, some people take a couple of years to knock out, what is it, I think, 18 drinks for, we don't want to encourage that, to do that in one day or so. So, that's where we are on that. It's, all of you know, our 64 parks are a tremendous asset for, excuse me, for our residents and visitors. We're excited tonight to announce that we've created a Dublin Parks Pass. It's digital, it'll be on your phone, it'll have a filter capability, so people can filter and say, okay, we're playgrounds, we're basketball courts, tennis courts, et cetera, as well, so we're excited about that. We're also happy that Ohio Health will be the title sponsor of that Park Pass as well. The only Dublin video series, I know I sent you guys a couple of weeks ago, that continues to flourish and drive business and highlight our businesses that are only in Dublin. We just completed the Abbey Road one. The next one we're doing is Coast Wine, and we're just working with Washington Township. We're going to do the fire, the fire station in the water tower, which is obviously very unique in our market as well, so we're doing that and highlighting that, too. One market that we've never really stopped promoting, but we've kind of amped it up, is the bus tour market. These tours generate up to 50 people at one time, coming from all across the region. You know, we're always constantly looking at creating new experiences to kind of entice these folks. You can imagine 50 people at one time, they're spending, coming downtown, they're spending lots of money, staying in our hotels, restaurants, et cetera. Today, we've had 21 buses from seven states coming to town. This is one that we took last week from Pennsylvania. They're enjoying our ferry, what is it, Penny Whistle, sorry, Penny Whistle experience that we do as well. So, and these folks stayed a couple of nights in a Dublin hotel. The sports market, again, is helping us. This past weekend, if you were at Dari, you may have seen a bunch of rugby players. We had the Ohio Rugby Cup here, 28 boys and girls, high school teams participated in that. In May alone, we've attracted 1,000 teams in various tournaments to the city of Dublin, the Wayne Williams Baseball Tournament, the Ohio State Middlestool Lacrosse Tournament, the Starburst Soccer Tournament as well, we're here. So, that's been huge as well. We're hosting, as you can see here, the Buckeye Classic Archery Championship again in August at Dari. I did want to thank Dana and Robert and Matt and all of you for embarking on the Parks and Recreation Master Plan and allowing the hospitality industry to participate that and provide our input. Again, I won't go through my rhetoric. I spent a lot of time last week talking about the opportunity we have and the need to fill that void of corporate travel, but I will say that we've kind of taken a proactive step and created kind of our vision for what we're calling the Dari Fields Community Complex that we've shared with staff, just to kind of start the ball rolling, start the discussion on what we potentially would need to generate those additional visitors into town. So, that's something that we look forward to, we're looking forward to the Wednesday's public session as well. And again, anything we can do to help you along those lines, you know, please let us know, we're happy to do it. I can tell you that our vision of it is really nothing new. I mean, we're seeing these complexes all across the state of Ohio, across the region and country. I think the one void is there's nothing here in this region of the state in central Ohio. And it's inevitable it's going to happen, because there's just too much demand and need for it, and, you know, we're hoping we're the first, as we are in most things, to go ahead and do it. I know there's been a lot of talk the last few months or so about the Downtown Strategic Alliance, in particular, how it relates to, I believe it's your fourth goal in historic Dublin. I wanted to kind of give you a quick glimpse, because a lot of you weren't here when this was first established, but if you remember when Bridge Park first broke ground, I think there was definitely some apprehension, which is fair to say, from the historic Dublin businesses and the folks, about the whole future of them. And, you know, we always thought, and I think it was really becoming in a way an us-versus-them type situation, and we always believed at the time that, you know, a high tide, a rising tide lifts all boats kind of mentality. So, we believed we needed to get everyone together on the same table to begin to work together, collaborate together, communicate together, versus they're doing their own thing and this group doing their own thing. So, in 2016, we established this alliance. We funded, Visit Dublin funded a strategic plan that we began to implement. The first group's part of that alliance was Visit Dublin, the city, HDBA, Crawford-Hoang and Historical Society were the first entities that were part of that. Six years later, we're still meeting on a monthly basis, we're collaborating, we're working on marketing campaigns together, working on events together. We've added, in the last couple of years, we've added the Dublin Arts Council and the Dublin Chamber of Commerce to the group as well. So, I know it's more of a, from our perspective, it's a sales and marketing entity, but if there's anything we can do as an entity and be your voice to that group down there, please let us know. I know they'd be willing to help and support you guys in any way we can as well. This, oops, sorry. We have been accredited again the last past month or so. We went through this process, which is very strenuous. I can tell you, there's 6,000 organizations like our CVB, Destination Marketing Organizations, there's only 250 nationwide that are accredited, which is about 4%. So, in Ohio, it's only us, Experienced Columbus and Visit Cincinnati, USA, so we're the only three. So, again, just another level of we're trying to do things right. As a heads up, we are embarking on our next, updating our three-year strategic plan in the fall, so you'll be hearing from me. We'd love to get your input and insight and staff's insight, so you'll be hearing from me to add to your busy calendars as well here in the fall. I guess, and finally, I'd just kind of like to thank you for, and our hospitality, I'd like to thank you for all the support you've given us over the past couple of years. I know as an organization, we've tried hard to diversify our funding model. Our organization, other CVBs worldwide are still reliant on bed tax, it's just the way the model is. And with bed tax being so far down the last year, you know, few years, I think we've done what we could to try to generate other revenue from the private sector. We have 78 partners now, the private sector's really stepped up, most are small hospitality-type businesses. Last year, we had a 94% retention rate, so I think those businesses see the benefit of their investment. And we've also, first ever, we started a corporate sponsorship program, limiting it to the first six, and you can see there the organizations that have jumped and are supporting us financially, and thank you again for all your support as well. So, Mayor, that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Scott. Does anyone have any questions for Scott?
Yeah, I just have, I have a comment. You mentioned the Celtic Cocktail Tour, which is, you know, really interesting, and it is interesting, because they were very creative at each of these stops on what they did to tie this to an Irish theme, a lot of Jameson, mostly, but, and then the ferry doors are awesome. But the other thing is, on river boxes, if we could market that at the same level, and the other interesting thing, and you mentioned the parks, you know, how we have all these wonderful parks, but I found out, when you're trying to do the river boxes, there's a different playground, of different equipment, almost at every one of these sites. And if you're trying to drive somebody through, your grandkids or kids, two, three to five of these things, they're so enamored with the neat, and I don't know how we worked this into your world, they're so enamored with the neat playground equipment, that they do the one ferry box, but then they want to spend 20, 30 minutes at the park. So, we have these really cool parks that the Parks Department has come up with very interesting equipment, and it's really entertaining. And then, and then the Public Services Committee chaired by Amy and Kathy and myself work on this, and the parks planning thing, you mentioned that, and our direction to the Parks Department is, we want Dublin to be the city that where, if you're a young person or anybody else, you want to come here, because the river's being utilized in a very progressive way, and it's going to be very positive, and it's an adventurous city and a fun city to be in, so that's our direction. And so far, I'd have to say, the discussions we had with our consultants have been very, very positive. I mean, these people look like they've been all over the country and are going to come back with a dynamic program to help you out, hopefully by New Year's or, you know, Christmas period, so. And then, any input you have towards that, the committee would love it.
Thank you, yeah, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other? Kathy?
Scott, thank you very much for all that you do. I find the data that you provide to us incredibly helpful and incredibly illuminating. Back on your very first slide, you say we're sort of at 52%. I think it might be helpful as we move forward and we're watching what's happening in corporate America, I didn't know the ability to have necessary to slice that, but really to help us understand if, what and if the recovery in that market looks like and what, you know, a little bit more by those important segments, because I guess my question to you is, at 52%, if rates start to level back, I mean, is that a sustainable level of capacity for some of our hotel partners here? And, you know, the more data we have and the more you can help us understand what we need to do to be supportive of this, I think it would be, it would be very helpful.
Yeah, we can slice and dice the data any way we want. You know, I think right now, it's interesting, Monday through Thursday, historically, pre-COVID, were our busiest times of our day or the week for our hotels. They were the highest rated, they were highest occupancy, and that's totally flipped. Now, Friday, Saturday night are our busiest times of the week, just because the corporate business isn't there, and the leisure business is really driving the market right now, and that's why rates are so high. I think corporate travelers, the ones that are traveling, have to travel, so they're not de-incentivized by high rates, are still doing it. So, I think that's why they're, and again, this isn't a Dublin thing by any means. I mean, nationwide, internationally, business travel is still, especially if you look at urban environments, downtown Columbus is struggling, Cincinnati, Chicago, et cetera, et cetera.
Scott, I have a question for you. You mentioned in the past about lack of convention space, but then you also mentioned corporate travel is down, so convention space would be, convention demand would be down. And, but you say leisure is up. What about in the area of weddings and that? Do we have spaces for that? Is that something that you're seeing, you know, that you have some energy in when it comes to bringing the hotel rooms up?
Not as much as we need. I mean, obviously, the social is huge, especially on the weekends, you know, I'm sure you get exchange numbers. I mean, they're booked pretty much a year out. Same with our two hotels, Embassy and Marriott are the only other convention space hotels we have. The Crown left and Doubletree replaced, and they killed all the, or they destroyed all the meeting space there. So, we don't have a lot of venues out there for larger weddings, per se. They're definitely going up north to the Solmeil area and downtown and such, so. And it's important, because those people, one, it's where the people that do weddings, they usually stay close to town, hotel-wise, overnights as well. So, it's absolutely a need, yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? No?
Just one really quick one. So, as we think about, you know, staffing and basically a labor market recovery that's going to take a lot longer than I think we originally anticipated, anyone anticipated. As you're talking with the hotels and the businesses, is, I mean, some of what's driving those prices has to be some of these higher wages, so that they can attract people in, is that what you're seeing with them?
I mean, the higher rates, the higher food costs you're getting, it's totally a trickle-down effect, right? I mean, they're absolutely, it's hard finding people, you can't pay someone minimum wage anymore to do some of these jobs. And, you know, our industry is, for the most part, are unfortunate, the lower-wage jobs, especially the restaurants and bussing and waitresses and such, so they're really hard to find. The hotel sales staff, I mean, they're fighting amongst each other, cannibalizing each other. I mean, I look at our list, it's amazing, like, every two weeks, this person went from this hotel to this hotel, they stay in our market, they're just kind of interchanging and popping around at the highest bidder at the moment, so it's a weird dynamic for sure.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. The next item on our agenda is citizens' comments. So, this is an opportunity for citizens to comment on any topic that is not on tonight's agenda. So, is there anyone present who wishes to make a comment, or have any comments been received online this evening?
Nothing online, Mayor.
All right, and there are no other comments? Then we'll proceed to the consent agenda. Is there a request to remove any item from the consent agenda this evening? No? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move to this consent agenda.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Jenny, will you please call roll?
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Scram?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
All right, second reading, public hearing ordinance number 24-22.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into an infrastructure agreement with EG Retail America LLC for the Turkey Hill project.
Our staff report this evening is from Paul Hammer Smith, our Director of Engineering. Hi, Paul.
Good evening, council members. There is no new information to provide on this item this evening. Staff does recommend approval. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have since the first reading.
All right, thank you. Do we have any public comment on this? Thank you. Council, do we have any questions or discussion for Paul this evening? No? All right. Jenny, will you please call roll?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to waive council rules in order to consider ordinances 25-22, 26-22, and 27-22 together. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ordinance 25-22, authorizing the city manager to execute and accept necessary conveyance documents and contracts to acquire certain property located on Sean Falls Drive, identified as Franklin County Parcel Number 273-00079700 from Ohio Health Corporation and Ohio Not-for-Profit Corporation for the public purpose of replacing the Sean Falls Drive Bridge, which shall be open to the public without charge. Ordinance 26-22 pertaining to property located on Sean Falls Drive, identified as Franklin County Parcel Numbers 273-00078500 and 273-00078600 from 220 West Bridge Street LLC. Ordinance 27-22 regarding the property located at Sean Falls Drive, identified as Franklin County Parcel Number 273-00248500 from Biscar Properties LLC.
Our staff report this evening, once again, is Paul Hammer Smith.
Members of council, the only updated information I do have to provide is in regard to the first reading. When we talked about the sidewalk along the west side of Shawan Falls Drive, I think I've mentioned it was a four-foot sidewalk. It's actually a five-foot sidewalk along that west side. And I did confirm that in regards to an eight-foot shared-use path, there just is not sufficient space over there without impacting the parking and requiring additional acquisition from those businesses of the office building from Ohio Health on that west side. So with that, staff does recommend approval and I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Do we have any public comment on this? Counsel, any questions for Paul this evening? None? Jenny, please call roll.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
We have no ordinance for first reading this evening. Introduction in public hearing on resolutions, Resolutions 30-22.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the 2022 pavement repair program.
I'll reduce it.
Thank you. Staff report once again. Paul?
Members of council, staff conducted a competitive bid process for the 2022 pavement repair program. And on June 9th, 2022, two bids were received and publicly opened. This program is funded from the 2022-2026 Capital Improvements Program. It's $500,000 for the annual preventative maintenance within the CIP. In addition to funding needed for pavement repairs, the program funds provide for the annual pavement crack sealing performed on city streets. Staff recommends council approval of this resolution, accepting as lowest and best a bid of Strauss or Paving Company Incorporated in the amount of $138,945 for this program. I'll do my best to answer any questions from council about this resolution.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this? Counsel, any questions?
Paul, I've got a couple of questions. Was, was the map modified to meet the budget on this one?
It was not. No.
And so for, I'm assuming your crack sealing is paid by the linear foot and your pavement repair is by the square foot. Do you have any idea what these prices per linear foot and square foot were relative to previous?
I do not. Our estimate was pretty close on this. And it was actually $151,900. So we estimated a little high because we did inflate it from last year, but it actually did come in less than that.
Do they give you linear foot and square foot pricing? If there's ads?
I believe so, but I don't have that committed memory and I'd have to do some digging to get that for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kathy?
Thank you, Paul. I, I have a question sort of related to this and similar to the next question. So if a resident, I, I saw the map of what is planned to work. So if a resident sees something or something comes up this summer, there's a contingency dollars to, to solve some of this? What, is that included in this budget normally? How does that work, Paul?
We do normally add some contingency. I wouldn't say that we put it in here in particular in this program, but we do have the ability to add some additional area if needed. And again, we work with asset management as those additional areas might be identified based on resident inquiries or something that staff may see out in the field. So we're not necessarily specifically locked into the contract itself, but yet we want to be cost-conscious and not exceed it, you know, beyond reason.
Any other questions? Nope. Jenny, will you please call roll?
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Resolution 31-22.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the 2022 shared-use path and parking lot maintenance.
I'll reduce it.
Paul?
You just can't get rid of me.
I can't, no. We don't want to, though. Really, you're too valuable.
So. Members of council, staff conducted a competitive bid process for the 2022 shared-use path and parking lot maintenance program. And on June 9th, 2022, one bid was received and publicly opened. This program is funded from the CIP in the amount of $275,000 for annual shared-use path maintenance and $110,000 for annual parking lot maintenance for a combined funding of $385,000. This program this year is over the budgeted funds by $116,690.46. Engineering consulted with finance and staff anticipates being able to cover the additional program costs using funds previously appropriated as part of the 2022-2026 CIP and available from one or more projects appropriated in 2022, but that will not proceed this year and will be included in the upcoming CIP for 2023-2027. Staff determined the increased costs are primarily due to the continued rise in petroleum cost and secondarily from inflation in material and trucking cost. Furthermore, the program includes $34,000 in contingency items that most likely will not be fully utilized in the work. The program is expected to commence in July and be complete in September, on September 16th, 2022. Staff recommends council approval of this resolution, accepting as lowest and best a bid of Strauss or Paving Company Incorporated in the amount of $501,690.46 for this program. Again, I'll do my best to answer any questions from council.
Any comments? Counsel, some questions?
I just had clarification, a couple, so it's the same contractor we just approved for the other, the last, the pavement repair. They were underbid by, what, 8% on that project and they're over on 10 on this one? And I'm curious, what makes the difference? I mean, the cost of asphalt on both of them would be similar, right?
It's a different material and the application's different, different equipments used. We feel also one of the driving forces in the cost was the timeframe. We did get this out to bid a little later this year than we did previously, and it is weather-sensitive and temperature-sensitive as far as the application. So we want that done during the warmer months. And so that compressed really the application period. We think that did have some effect.
A little bit of a premium for getting it done.
Right.
And that leads into my second question then. So we're confident, though, they can get, both these projects overlap and they have enough staff and materials, they can do all of this?
We've already had that discussion with the contractor and yes.
Thanks.
Other questions? No. Paul, I have a question for you. Because of the higher cost of materials and probably labor as well, some of these things are coming in, you know, 10, 20% over. As we go into the CIP, or as if you see trends, or you see that, that we need to be thinking about that sort of thing, will you kind of give us an awareness of that? Because the infrastructure and those are our major costs. To kind of give us an idea of whether or not these actually did come in, whether these contingencies helped us out in the end and whether or not we were able to bring things under budget, just to kind of give us a sense as we go forward in our budgeting process?
Certainly. And with our, certainly in cooperation with our friends in finance, we keep close track of that and have been having those discussions about these increased costs and the impact on the CIP and available funds. So most certainly.
I have one final question about the parking lot there adjacent to Franklin Street. I know we're going to be embarking on the extension of Franklin Street. Will that parking lot not be utilized for any storage of materials or things like that that would be associated with the extension?
It is not our desire to use that for any material storage, just given its utilization on a daily basis and how important it is to historic Dublin. So I think we would look for other places for that to occur than, than in that, those parking lots.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Let's see. We are at Resolution 33-22? No, no, 30, yes. Where are we at here?
We need to call the roll.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. All right, Jenny, call the roll.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
All right. Now, now I can turn the page. Resolution 33-22. I'm sorry, I'm reading it wrong. 33-22. All right. Where, wait a minute, my mic changed.
Resolution 32-22.
I thought I said that. Didn't I say that? Okay. Would you read that, please?
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the Riverside Drive East Shared Use Path, Section 1, Waterline Extensions Areas 4A, 4B, and Waterline Extension Area 4A, Phase 2 Project.
I'll reduce it.
Thank you. Paul, help me out here.
Actually, excuse, before you start, I just want to say that I'm going to recuse myself from this one because the waterline project impacts my house.
Thank you. So.
Members of council, staff conducted a competitive bid.
Excuse me. Are we, this, she, it's Amy, it's okay for her to stand, but, yeah. Thank you, Amy. All right. Paul?
Staff conducted a competitive bid process for the Riverside Drive East Shared Use Path, Section 1, Waterline Extension Areas 4A, 4B, and Waterline Extension Area 4A, Phase 2 Project. And again, this is a combined project of three separate projects that we rolled into one for efficiencies. And on June 9th, 2022, two bids were received and publicly opened. And spoiler alert here, Strauss or Paving Company Incorporated. This project is funded from ordinance 04-22 in the amount of $2.13 million from the Riverside Drive East Shared Use Path, Section 1, and the Water Extension Fund. The project bid exceeds the budgeted funds by $341,182.15. Once again, engineering consulted with finance and staff anticipates being able to cover the additional program costs using funds previously appropriated in the 2022-2026 CIP. Staff recognized additional project costs in line with current supply chain issues in the areas of steel for the pedestrian bridge, petroleum as it relates to trucking, embankment, and asphalt cost. And most significantly, in waterline materials, ductile iron water system components, in line with the ductile iron water system component supply memo provided to council in the June 14th, 2022 city manager update. Regarding the project schedule, due to the extended lead time on waterline materials, both ductile iron and PVC, the schedule had to be modified to allow the waterline installation to begin nine months after bid. The waterline and shared-use path construction is restricted to begin after March 2023, with the project's final completion date being August 30th of 2023. Residents within the project boundaries will be notified of the changes in the project schedule through the US mail or a letter through the US mail. Staff recommends council approval of this resolution, accepting as lowest and best a bid of Strauss or Paving Company Incorporated in the amount of $2,471,182.15 for this project. I'll be glad to answer any questions council might have about this resolution.
Thank you, Paul. Do we have any comments? Lindsay? Counsel, questions?
Paul, I know we've been in discussion over the years with the Columbus Zoo relative to their water and sewer issues of their infrastructure that runs adjacent to Riverside Drive. Have we been in contact with them about possibly utilizing an open trench and maybe some cost sharing that could be associated with that to help? I, I know this particular area represents many of their breaks as of recent. So have we talked with them at all about possible cost sharing of that or trench sharing?
We haven't talked to them about any cost sharing or trench sharing. We've talked to them about the condition of their infrastructure in that Forest Main that comes from, you know, near Glick Road. They have, I believe, engaged a consultant to take a look at the condition of that line and evaluate its replacement. So we do have active discussions with them. We are actually presently in the process of following up with them about that. I don't believe it would ever be co-located in the same trench. You do have to have at least 10-foot of separation between both pipes. So I think it will probably most likely remain on the west side of Riverside Drive, but we believe it's in need of replacement. And I, I, I believe the zoo fully understands that, too. It's just the how they will accomplish that.
Okay. I, it just, you know, I, digging two trenches isn't, sometimes isn't less expensive than digging one plus one, but.
Right.
You know, I, I think it would be neighborly of us to notify them of our activity and see if they were interested. I know that they have some supply line issues as well of, of lines that wouldn't require the 10-foot separation, but, you know, they may have interest in laying something in there that could be utilized for future use or something. I just think it's neighborly, since we've had the conversation with them.
Understood.
At least reach out and say, we're going to do this if you want to participate in some way. And then if they say no, then that's, there's nothing wrong with that, but at least we did the right thing.
All right. Probably one of the first steps we'd have to do is go back and take a look at our easements because I do think they're exclusive to our use for both the shared-use path and our own utilities.
Well, there, there could be other levels of complexity, but I, I just think it's the right thing to just engage.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other? All right. If we don't have any other, Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?[1630.21]
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Resolution 33-22.
Appointing a member to the Bridge Park New Community Authority.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. Our staff report this evening is Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yeah, thank you very much. I know we share the importance that the work of our boards and commissions continues to be incredibly vital to the success of our city, and tonight we have a vacancy to fill that is a two-year term as a citizen representative to the Board of Trustees of the Bridge Park New Community Authority. I'm delighted to say that, as usual, we had wonderful applicants and that we're always willing and ready to serve our community, and we very much thank them for stepping forward. Council conducted interviews, and I'm pleased to bring forward a resolution for council's approval to appoint Young Ken to the Board of Trustees of the Bridge Park New Community Authority for a two-year term, expiring March 31st, 2024. So I bring that forth through your consideration.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this? No. Counsel, are there any questions or discussion? All right, thank you. Jenny, please call roll.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
I make a motion to waive council rules of order to consider Resolutions 34-22 and 35-22 together. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Jenny, will you please? Excuse me.
Vote on the motion.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Resolution 34-22, accepting the preliminary plat for Bremley Estates to subdivide plus or minus 4.66 acres into four single-family lots and one open space reserve, and to dedicate one public right-of-way, Case 22003 PP. Resolution 35-22 is accepting the final plat for Bremley Estates.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. Our staff report this evening is Nikki Martin. Nikki?
Great. Good evening, mayor members of council. As mentioned, this is a request for acceptance of a preliminary and final plat. The 4.66-acre site is presently located within the city of Dublin and is north of the Woods of Indian Run subdivision at the Terminus of Nature Drive. North of the site is Washington Township, and east of the site is the North Fork of the Indian Run. As council may recall, the site was annexed into the city of Dublin in 2013 from Washington Township. Subsequently, the site was rezoned from rural to limited suburban residential district, and simultaneously, city council approved a preliminary plat to establish four single-family lots with the extension of Nature Drive, including a stub street providing access to the parcels to the north. A final plat, in alignment with the approved preliminary plat, was never pursued. This evening, council has asked to consider a revised layout brought forth by a new developer. So most recently, on May 19th of 2022, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended disapproval to city council for both the preliminary and final plat for Bremley Estates. Planning and Zoning Commission found that the proposed site layout is inconsistent with the community plan, specifically the thoroughfare plan and the bikeways plan, and doesn't adequately accommodate additional development to the north. Furthermore, provision of public utility service and ability to provide emergency services, including fire, were determined by the commission to not be adequately met. So in response, staff reviewed both the community plan, including those elements of future land use, and the thoroughfare plan, and provided city council a conceptual street configuration in alignment with what the community plan would contemplate in terms of development to the north, depicting the opportunity to stub Nature Drive as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. This configuration, as reviewed and recommended by the Transportation and Mobility Division, allows for the distribution of traffic across the street network, interconnected neighborhoods consistent with recently approved neighborhoods, including Highland Glen and the Hamlet on Jerome, as well as Autumn Rose Woods, where stub streets have been extended to accommodate future development. Finally, in detail, the addition of the four lots that are proposed establish a condition where a total of 100 lots, so four plus the 96 existing lots within the Woods of Indian Run subdivision, would share a single access point at the intersection of Kaufman Road, which is not ideal for the provision of emergency services. Allowing for a stub street would preserve the opportunity to remedy this condition in the future. Additionally, the applicant had previously declined to design the sewer and water service to the city of Columbus and the city of Dublin standards, as well as had declined to ensure the minimum necessary depth to serve not only this parcel but parcels to the north. Since the Planning and Zoning Commission's review, the applicant has indicated they would be willing to redesign the utility services should city council decide to approve the preliminary and final plat. So both Planning and Zoning Commission and staff are recommending disapproval of the preliminary and final plats this evening. However, as identified in your memo, should council wish to approve the preliminary and final plats, two plat variances are necessary. One, to modify the right-of-way width, and the second, to modify the pavement width of the extension of Nature Drive. And five conditions are recommended. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, the applicant's representative is here as well tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki. We have some public comment on this, Lindsay?
Yes, our first person signed in is Tom Hart.
If you'll just state your name and address, please, thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, council. My name's Tom Hart. My address is 5029 Cemetery Road. With me tonight is RJ Sabatino, the applicant and my client. He would like to address council after some initial comments by me at the mayor's pleasure. That's, that's okay. We recognize, first of all, that the staff report reflects city policy in this situation. The question presented is whether a cul-de-sac or connecting road is the best approach for high-value infill development on this particular site. The applicant is trying to, is trying to develop at the highest end of the housing market with the highest lot value for the site. This is not going to work, that goal will not be accomplished with a connecting road as kind of the defining feature, the organizational feature that impacts these four lots. The placement of a stub street will impact value and expectations in the market, whether the stub street's ever extended or not. A stub street there is going to change the value of the property. This is likely why the acreage has not developed since 2014, where the, when the plat was, when the preliminary plat was approved with, with a stub street. We've been in the highest absorption in the housing market, highest demand in the market for, for most of our lifetimes, and this site did not develop with a stub. The connector road's also problematic for the applicant's, not only applicant's lots, but the, but the land to the north. Nikki showed you the potential development that could take place there off a stub street. That property's pretty limited by size and geometry. That type of development with a stub street, if it happened, if that land was annexed in the future, would be fairly intense for this area. We just think it's a better approach to keep, to keep, keep the land, you know, at, with these high-value lots, lower impact, lower intensity, lower traffic. The case raises maybe a bigger question, and that is, what we're, what we have is we're applying standard subdivision development regulations and rules, which obviously has served Dublin very well. There's, there's, you know, Dublin is the envy of the housing market, has been for many, many years. But the question is, does that always work in every case, especially when you get to these smaller infill sites? Like, like most suburbs, Dublin will experience more and more infill development proposals and applying subdivision regulations that typically are applied to greenfield sites is the question really presented here. Is there a different approach, in this case, to reach a higher value? With that, mayor, I'd like to ask RJ to address you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. If you'll state your name and address, please.
Good evening, RJ Sabatino, 2705 Donna Drive. Good evening, council, and thank you for, thank you for having us. We're excited to present this unique and workable project, four large lots to be constructed by Roman Elliott Hughes, if approved of the cul-de-sac. We've been working on this project for a little over a year. We've addressed and/or agreed to all of staff comments, with the exception of the significant point of contention, which is the stub versus the cul-de-sac. Maybe some of the more obvious reasons that a stub doesn't work in this circumstance can be seen over time. This piece of property was annexed a decade or so ago, and a preliminary plat, a preliminary plat was approved, but since long expired because a stub street simply does not work. Secondly, I won't speak for them, but we do have some of the Woods of Indian Run Neighborhood Association here, who are largely in support of our project as, as presented with the cul-de-sac. Again, we've agreed and accepted all of staff comments, with the exception of the cul-de-sac, the exception of the stub street request. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. So thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any, I think we have one more signed in.
We do, Andrew Denninger.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Andrew Denninger. I live on 5240 Forest Run Drive, so my property actually backs up to the old horse farm where Bremley Estates would be situated. I'm about three houses east of Nature Drive. I'm also a member of the Woods of Indian Run Homeowners Association Board of Trustees. While the board would prefer that nothing be built in this area, this green space that I have in my backyard, and that, you know, prefer that it be donated as a park or saved as a green space, we understand that that is highly unlikely. The board, after months of research, talking to the current owner, talking to the previous owner, talking to developers, potential developers, and understanding the market conditions, as well as what's going on, and understanding the location of that piece of property in Dublin, realized that it's unlikely to remain undeveloped for a long time. While I cannot speak for all 96 houses, which are under the Woods of Indian Run Homeowners Association, I can speak for the board. The board supports a plan limiting a potential development to four houses with a cul-de-sac. While we understand that the Bremley Estates is not a perfect plan, especially with, like, what they showed with the sewers, it is, if the land is to do, is to be developed, the board does not want a stub street that could lead to further development and have a cut through through our neighborhood. There's multiple members within our HOA that expressed a lot of concern about what was shown up there previously with the community plan of having a larger development in that area. If you have any questions, just feel free to reach out to me. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Counsel? Questions for the applicant, questions for staff? Do we have any? John?
I'm sort of, sort of curious why the staff proposed a more higher-density housing pattern for the undeveloped portion, portion to the north. It seems like the, the idea of having larger lots is something we're trying to, trying to do, not that this is approvable because of all the criteria that's come along with it, but why the staff would select that, and once the road goes through, why those lots wouldn't be larger and why they'd be more intense, I'm just sort of curious, because I think we're looking for larger-scale lots for larger homes, so that I don't understand, and I think that's probably one of the concerns of the homeowners is, you know, if we're going to, if they're going to see that develop someday, they'd like to see, you know, a larger group of lots than the more high-intensity lots that, you know, were drawn in there. I'm just curious why that was. Thank you.
Yeah, so in regards to the graphic prepared by staff, that was intended to be illustrative only, and it was intended to illustrate that the community plan contemplates land that's already outside of Dublin, because we anticipate over time that it will be part of Dublin. And the future land use recommendation for that is suburban residential low-density, which recommends quarter-acre lots. So it was the intent of staff merely to depict the density identified in the community plan, which is smaller, are smaller lots, i.e. more dense than what is being proposed by the developer, but it was meant to really be illustrative only to show how a street could connect and provide this developer the opportunity to develop four large lots here. That's not to say that there couldn't be an alternative in the future.
Do you have other questions? Amy?
I don't have questions, I just have discussion. Are we to discuss?
Yeah, that's fine, you can.
Okay. I actually, I mean, when I was reading through our big packet, I remembered I was actually on planning and zoning when we approved the one in 2014, and the neighbors then, too, wanted it. We were very happy, it was just four lots, and they really wanted to just keep it small. It was kind of a, just an extension of their neighborhood. So in light of that, I mean, I don't, I know there's lots of issues on the site in general, I know the fire access, but I just don't feel we can penalize them, but they built 96 homes, you can't, with only one entrance, you can't add four more and say, now you need a second, so. I, I think the cul-de-sac is a, I like that option. I would prefer, though, we rearrange the lot lines so that there is right-of-way to the north, so we can get the sewer and water to the north, so if those would develop, we could at least get services up there and like a shared-use path and connect it that way. But I don't have heartburn over a cul-de-sac if we can meet the requirements. I was concerned with the amount of open space. I, I don't think we should count the retention pond, so I don't know how much was left after you take out the retention pond, if they meet those requirements. It's also in a location that will just be considered lot fours and lot, three and fours backyard. I don't think it's going to be truly open space, they're just going to, over time, think it's their private yard. So I think there would be, we would need to resolve the open space issue, and obviously the bedrock and blasting issue to get the utilities where they need to be. So there's certainly constraints, but the cul-de-sac itself is not giving me heartburn.
Kathy?
I have a question. Nikki, could you please help me understand a little bit further about the, the fire and the access and that point, which sounded like a, a pretty swaying point for both staff and for the Planning and Zoning Commission? Could you elaborate on that a bit, please? Thank you.
Yeah, so today, when a neighborhood is developed, Washington Township and the city of Dublin do not accept more than 30 lots per access point, so.
Access point being a road in, road out, or what do you?
A road in, that you could also go out of. So we do not accept more than 30 lots. The Woods of Indian Run predates that regulation coming out of the fire code. That being said, the stub street that exists today, and perpetuating that stub into the future, preserves the city and Washington Township's opportunity to remedy a situation that is undesirable, rather than perpetuate and really retain in perpetuity 100 lots that share one single access point, which, in the case of a emergency, should that emergency be happening at the main intersection, could be very challenging to serve.
Nikki, could you please put up a slide where you showed the thoroughfare, the city's thoroughfare plan for these lots? I think it was maybe your third or fourth slide in? Thank you.
So I just want to be clear that this depiction is not adopted in the thoroughfare plan or in the community plan. It is a conceptual configuration of how it could be applied.
So I appreciate a rendering like this because, you know, as we accept development, preliminary development plans for any development, it's, I would agree with Amy that a single cul-de-sac does not give me heartburn. However, we're not creating a single cul-de-sac. We're probably creating three of them. If these subsequent parcels were allowed to develop in the same way that we're contemplating allowing this to develop, you would have something coming in off Kaufman Road on the existing single-family home, and then you would have an additional cul-de-sac that would happen immediately to the north. So while I would agree that, that a cul-de-sac, I don't believe is problematic, but what we're really probably entering into is three cul-de-sacs. So, while I would agree that, that a cul-de-sac, I don't believe is problematic, but what we're really probably entering into is three cul-de-sacs as, as the future land would develop. So, I think for that reason, this, it is important that this road pass through this piece of property. And while I'm sympathetic to the residents there, I, I think to Belvedere, when, when the development of Riviera was happening, there were stub streets out of Belvedere that were going to be cross easement access into, you know, what is now Riviera, which was the golf course. And I, I don't know that there is much traffic that utilizes those connector streets. I think most everyone comes in and out of Riviera and ultimately, most everyone would come in and out of this development on the roadway that would line up with Arlington Parkway. So, I, I don't believe that this would generate a lot of traffic on Preserve Drive or Nature Drive, I'm sorry, because these people simply wouldn't pass through another neighborhood to get to theirs. It would, likely, it would reduce traffic long term because some of the folks, or at least maybe on the northern portion of this, might access through the Arlington Parkway entrance rather than using the entrance into there. So, I, I just, I think that the fire department has good reason to, to make the rules that they do relative to the number of lots per entry egress point. I do think that it's incumbent for us to meet the intent of our fire and EMS people. And I do think that we have to contemplate that we're not creating one cul-de-sac, that we're probably creating three. So, you're going to, and you're going to have, you likely would have an additional entrance egress off of Kaufman for the property immediately to the west. And then you would have another entrance egress you would have to allow on the property to the north. Because if we're not requiring communication and collaboration in these developments, it would be unreasonable for us to ask that of the next person. So, for those reasons, I, I support the recommendation as presented.
Any other discussion? I actually, I'm a little bit familiar with this one as well. And I know that connectivity. I, I agree with Councilman Amos Grooms that it is important to think about the fire, about perpetuating a situation that isn't ideal at the present time. I also know that as we see land that may have been left vacant for a long time, eventually in the future is not going to be vacant. It's going to be developed. It, it will be developed. And so, we have to think about that. But I do know that planning and zoning frequently, the commissioners talked about connectivity. And as we looked at all of these applications that come forward, we want to be sure that you're able to access the ravines and the trails and that we don't have these cul-de-sac spaces that are only owned by a few residents and there's no connectivity by bike or by walking paths through neighborhoods and two neighborhoods. And if we say that that's very important to us, mobility and connection, that I think by isolating, and I understand they would become like estate lots. But if our goal is pedestrian friendliness, that doesn't really move into that direction. So, I would agree with the recommendation by planning and zoning and by staff. And that's, is there any other comments that need to be made, that anyone wants to make? Kathy?
I, I didn't make a, what I would say, agree, agree or disagree. I am very much swayed by the safety issue and the egress and I just am. And I do believe the rest will develop. So, I too would be supportive of both staff and planning and zoning's recommendations.
Yeah, I, I would tend to agree. And I think the other really important issue here is getting the water and sewer up. Because if you don't do that piece of it, you're, you're, you know, cutting off your nose to spite your face for future development. And there will be future development. It's not going to stay, you know, all green space like this. And so, we have to be very forward thinking in that. And certainly, the safety aspect is something that, for me, is critically important. And while I understand that the neighborhood predated the updated fire codes and recommendations, you know, these houses don't. So, it's incumbent upon us to make sure that we're keeping all of our residents safe. Although I'm very sympathetic with what the neighborhood is talking about. And again, the, the one cul-de-sac itself doesn't bother me at all. It's the matter of future development and future connectivity, as well as the health and safety aspect of it, that, that I would be supportive of continuing with the planning and zoning's recommendation.
Any other comments? Any other questions? Mr. Hart?
Thank you. We, just to be clear, we, we have worked out the, the taking the sewer and, and water to the, to the, with the cul-de-sac plan to, to allow extension in the future. We also accommodated the, the need, because the city will own the open space while, while the private property owners would maintain it. We also accommodated the need to have a bike path connection through the site. Now, the bike path would still have to come through an adjacent property to get to the site, but we did accommodate the, the bike path request. In, in terms of fire, you know, I think Councilman Cram made the point I would make. It, you know, the, the Woods of Indian Run is probably a 30 plus, around 30 year old development, and that was approved pre-code with one, with one egress. And talking to the residents about that issue, they were clear to us that since parking's been restricted to one side of the street, opposite hydrants, they haven't had emergency issues, their, their opinion, not mine, in, in that issue, in that period. We understand fire is always going to want to, to accesses, but, but that, it, it's a question of fairness whether an issue of the past is, is, you know, placed on, on the doorstep of four lots. In terms of, of the cul-de-sac development, I think that's a very valid point, that there could be future cul-de-sac development that would be viable, you know, in the future to the north if, if this, if this development's cul-de-sac. But the key point is it won't be as intense. It'll be more, more like a development pattern that we're proposing where it's higher end. And it, it's not an intensity level that, that, that plan, that that plan shows. So, I appreciate the time, Mayor. Thanks for the consideration.
Thank you. Any other conversation here? Are we ready to build, to call the roll? Is there any other conversation? Certainly, Mr. Savatino.
Real quick, I apologize for cutting you off. Again, the property to the north is not green space. There are homes there right now. I just wanted to clarify that as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. If we don't have any other questions or conversation concerning this, we will, this is a motion, a resolution to accept together the preliminary plat. Do we, should we do these separately?
We can do, we can do these together, the two resolutions. I just want to make sure the resolution is accepting both the preliminary and the final plat. And so, if you say yes, then it's the plat as the applicant has presented. If you vote no, you're rejecting, and that would be concurrent with the, in concurrence with the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff's recommendation.
Thank you for clearing that, clarifying that. I think that's important. All right. So, both of these will be together. The Resolution 34-22 and Resolution 35-22 is for accepting the preliminary plats for Bremley Estates and accepting the final plat for Bremley Estates. Jenny, will you please call roll?
Ms. Aludo?
No.
Ms. Cram?
No.
Mr. Keeler?
No.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
No.
Mayor Fox?
No.
Ms. Amros Grooms?
No.
Mr. Reiner?
No.
Thank you. Other business this evening? Golf Club of Dublin, Public Services Commission Committee referral. And our staff report is City Manager Robert Rank, Deputy City Manager, I'm sorry, Deputy City Manager Robert Rank.
Thank you, members of council, and good evening. Though I intend to provide a, a brief overview of a pretty lengthy topic as part of the request for referral to committee, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions in detail. City staff works with New Era to administer the ground lease and operating agreement at the Golf Club of Dublin. This includes regular meetings with New Era management and the Battle and Trade Community Association Golf Course Committee on a wide variety of, of subjects, including golf course maintenance, capital needs, and resident concerns. Over the year, there's been one particular issue that has required much attention. A homeowner located on the fairway of hole five has expressed concerns regarding the amount of errant shots resulting in golf balls landing on their property. Staff and, and New Era in particular have worked over the years to address and try to remedy these concerns. But the, the concerns have not been able to be resolved to the satisfaction of the homeowner. As a result, in 2020, staff contracted with Dr. Michael Hurdzan, who's the course designer, to analyze the golf shot dispersion on the fifth hole and recommend a solution to reduce the number of golf balls landing in private property, particularly left of the fairway. Dr. Hurdzan's analysis resulted in a reconfiguration plan for hole five, which included realigning the tee boxes to appoint golfer, to point golfers toward the center of the fairway, install new tee boxes at a lower elevation, realign the golf cart path to accommodate new tee boxes, install new irrigation and drainage, and plant additional tree on the, trees on the left side of the hole. The implementation of the reconfiguration plan began in March 2021, but due to factors such as weather and the amount of golfer activity that was going through the hole on the tee boxes, the full implementation of the reconfiguration was not completed during the 2021 season. As a result, staff received communication from the same homeowner restating their concerns about the amount of errant golf shots landing on their property. Staff met with the homeowner and analyzed the problem with both Dr. Hurdzan and New Era staff. And as a result, staff determined that it would send city staff and city volunteers to observe the dispersion of the golf shots to get a sense, an objective sense of what exactly was happening. These, this occurred in April and May. Additionally, staff contracted again with Dr. Hurdzan to create a plan to convert the hole to a par four from a par five in the event the golf shot dispersion analysis did not show the level of shots landing in play and the boundaries of the golf course as would be hoped. The, the spotting in April showed we spotted approximately 435 golf shots over various times of the day. We made some adjustments, planted an additional large tree on the back tee box to try to point people more towards the center of the fairway based on the results in April. Went back out in May to observe the shots. At this point, the, certainly the, the tree helped, but there's still a, a significant number of balls landing on the left side of the fairway. I'd, I'd like to point out that that's not all landing necessarily in one homeowner's backyard, but along the fairway of hole five, which is very close to the, the homes. So, with reference to hole five, we've reached a point as a staff where we would like to discuss the path forward with the Public Services Committee because some of the options may change the whole substantially and potentially cause additional funding from the city moving forward. In addition to the issue with hole five, we would also request that council refer issues such as future operational and potential capital needs at the Golf Club of Dublin to the Public Services Committee for discussion and recommendations. Staff will ensure that affected residents are made aware of the Public Services Committee meeting so they can provide their feedback as part of the committee's discussion. And I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Do we have any comments on this? Questions? All right. I am, I'm.
I see on here that there is a cost estimate of in excess of $50,000 to the city for a redesign of the.
Yeah, there was a cost estimate.
There's a 50 and a 70 and a.
I'm sorry, say that one.
There, there were a couple of estimates. One was a $50,000 number, one was a $70,000 number. But who, who would bear those costs?
At this point, the city signed a memorandum of understanding with New Era in 2021 as part of Dr. Hurdzan's first analysis. In that memorandum of understanding, it stated that if the, if the original reconfiguration plan did not work, New Era would bear the, the costs of a, of regrading the fairway and any additional work that needed to be done. I suspect that, that notwithstanding that, New Era would probably approach the city and ask for some type of cost sharing, but that is the way the agreement was written in 2021.
And you say that there, the planting consisted of a single tree on the left side of the fairway?
There were several trees in 2021 that were planted. The problem with, that, that we encountered with that was when those trees were planted, residents that live on the right side of the fairway, on the other side of the pond, expressed complaints that then now they were getting golf balls in the back of their yards, which they hadn't experienced before. So, we've been trying to really balance a lot of competing interests on this case. The one tree that was planted in April was planted in a very specific place to try to just cut off at the point of, of the drive, a golfer aiming left. The, the suspicion is that golfers aren't trying to hit, obviously, down the left side of the fairway. But psychologically, with the, the pond and a narrow fairway, they're just, their body is adjusting to the left. And so, we planted that tree to try to stop that again. Everything's been done with the, the goal of trying to stop that. And so, an additional tree was planted. It brought, it certainly brought down the number of shots, but it's still outside of a, of a, a standard that we're trying to reach.
Well, Dr. Hurdzan certainly is a gifted golf course designer. I, I, I will just, I, I think that staff needs to work this out. I, I just can't help myself and to, to give one piece of advice is, whatever happens with this hole, I would design it to take driver out of play, which will probably eliminate 90% of your problems. And that could include, you know, water across the fairway. You could do that in a number of different ways, particularly on a link style golf course. You have an infinite number of ways you can do that. But I would encourage you to, to look at how to get driver out of hand on the tee because it is tight and, you know, the farther you go, the, you know, if you're off five degrees at 300 yards or if you're off five degrees at 150 yards, the result is different. So.
Thank you. I appreciate that feedback.
I'm kind of curious, since the original plan for the hole was a par four, right? And you would like to see this, and that is the recommendation.
A specific recommendation. We outlined some options that are not inclusive of all the options, similar to what Councilmember Amros Groom just said. There are a number of options that can be made. Some of the more, I guess, obvious would be to, you could shorten it to a par four. And Dr. Hurdzan has provided a, a plan for what that could look like in addition to showing the expected shot dispersion. Because we asked in very, the, the concern is making it a par four. We don't want to just move the problem down the fairway.
Exactly. That is exactly what you do.
Right.
And so, we asked to have an expected shot dispersion. In your packet, it, it may be a little bit difficult to see unless you zoom in on the, on the second map. There's shot dispersion charts, but nevertheless, it was originally planned to be a par four. And that's something that we can certainly look at to try to reduce the number of, of shots landing to the left of, of the, of the fairway.
Did he, did he prioritize remedies was, did Dr. Hurdzan's have a priority on what he felt would be the most effective ways to address this issue?
Yeah, he, he feels that, his recommendation would to, would be to make it a par four, adjust it down to, I believe, 400 yards. And then also fill in part of the pond at the, the southern end of the pond. The pond was, as, as you can see in his 2021 report, was extended. It was originally intended just to sort of be the main circular part. It was extended down the fairway, which further narrowed the fairway. And so, that is his recommendation from the, from his analysis. But again, that's certainly not the only.
Not the only one.
Alternative that can be considered.
Right. And, and your recommendation is to send this to the Public Services Committee for just review and to, and to take a look at all of the different options and ask for recommendation.
Exactly, yes.
All right.
John?
However, Mayor, if I may, I would add the other reason we're asking for referral to Public Service Committee, so this is on the record, is that there are any number of issues that have, had a rise with the management of this contract. And in that, this contract may also, well, it, it's a large contract, operational issues, there are other capital budget implications. And I just think it's time that council had more of a role in that oversight, if you will, and. will, and sounding board as well. We've done a lot, and I want to give Megan credit, I want to give Robert credit and staff, I'm sure Matt Erman's been involved in that too, in working with the residents of Ballintray and all the issues that have come up, as well as New Era. I think they've done a pretty good job with what they've had to work with and trying to keep that, remember, this has been in foreclosure a couple times, I think, and, and keeping the golf course operating. I think they've done a pretty good job, but there's just a lot of work to do there. So this is the primary issue, however, there are, could be other issues, and I'd like also permission to be able to bring those other items back to Public Service Committee on their agenda.
Now, I'd like to make a recommendation that we move this to Public Services along with the other issues that are impacting this particular golf course.
Are there any other, Cat, Chris?
I just, I would look really carefully at making it a short par four, because you're going to have more people with driver in their hand, swinging harder, because, you know, so I just, when you take that to them, I just would ask that you carry on that caution.
Thank you.
I think John made a motion, I'll second it.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Thank you. Council goals, our staff report, Dina?
Good evening, members of council. I refer city council to the memo dated June 7th, where the Performing Arts Center proposal was discussed. Staff collaborated with Councilmember Keeler, who council designated as your lead on this in preparing a recommendation. The recommendation was presented in a memo, and we're seeking council's guidance on this matter, per the questions posed in that memo, and I'll defer to Councilmember Keeler for any other comments he may have. Thank you. I don't know if you had any other comments, I didn't mean to ambush you with that, but-
Thank you. So I apologize for missing our, our meeting where we were to talk about this, and I appreciate you allowing me the opportunity to talk about it tonight. Per our conversation at retreat, I think we had agreed to at least pursue revisiting the cost and feasibility studies. So in your packet, we've outlined a number of different action steps, first of which is update the needs assessment, second is update the feasibility study, third, update the fundraising campaign feasibility study, fourth, designate an advisory committee, and number five, determine if the proposal would need to be broadened beyond just the performing arts. I stand behind my point, the points that I made at retreat several months ago, one through three, I think we pursue. As far as number four goes, I wouldn't pursue an advisory committee until we agree as a council that we actually want to move forward with a performing arts center. In terms of how that advisory committee would be constituted, I think a council member or two, certainly myself, and anyone else that's passionate about the arts and performing arts, certainly someone from the Dublin Arts Council, Scott Dring, or another Visit Dublin representative, and then in terms of the other folks, roughly once a month at least, if not every other, every other week, I'm contacted from, by somebody in the city or outside the city that has heard that we're talking about this. These are unsolicited contacts, which sort of confirms to me that there is an interest. So I have, I've compiled a list of folks that have contacted me, and some of those folks have suggested that I talk to someone else. One interesting interaction I had was with the gentleman that helped plan the Abbey Theater. He's living in Florida now, he has extensive theater experience, he knows the folks that helped us the first time around with the feasibility studies, and he said he would volunteer his time to help us get this thing off the ground and really more talk about the, the design and the facility itself. So I don't know that we belabor the issue now until we get on board with it as a council. As I'm contacted now by folks that I talked with three months ago, they, they ask me for updates, and I more or less just keep kind of putting them off. So I think we visit that, that point later, but tonight, I would at least like to get council support for pursuing those feasibility studies, and I think that the, the dollar amount that was, come up with was $50,000. I think it's money well spent, as I had said before. If for no other reason than it's something that our competing communities have, Carmel, Worthington, New Albany, Kettering, and other communities around the state, and I think it's just one more economic development, air on the quiver. No sooner do I minimize the economic development benefit, someone in the arts says, you know what, it's actually an economic development benefit, so I think it's worth pursuing. Thank you.
Other comments?
Andy, in the staff report, it indicated should the net be cast wider than just a performing arts center? What are your thoughts on that?
So there would be a theater space, and when I say theater space, it would be some, it would be a professional theater with a, what's called a full fly. I didn't even know what that was until I started to investigate it. Kaufman High School has such a thing. The issue, though, is that Kaufman High School is already at capacity. In fact, when the city uses their facility during the Irish Festival, it requires them to reschedule their routine summer maintenance and causes a bit of a disturbance. So there are high school programs that could occur that aren't, not just at Kaufman, but at the other high schools. There could be collaboration between those schools, larger performances, where you have collaboration between three theater programs combining for one performance. We have an active Dublin community bands in the community. These are folks that have contacted me numerous times. The Dublin Community Bands is made up of maybe four or five sub-bands, folks from 18 to 70 years old that play different instruments. They're struggling to find practice space and space to store their instruments, but beyond that, and, and this, this theater space, I envision having a floor that could be reconfigured for maybe dinner-type theaters, but in addition to that, there would be classroom space. I had coffee with a gentleman that I met during Community Service Day. He works at Worthington Industries, and in our work together pulling weeds at someone's house, I happened to insert performing arts center, and so we agreed to have coffee, and he said, you know, there may be a workforce development component to this. I know it sounds crazy, but kids during the summertime, they have their book clubs, they have their art programs at the rec center, which I believe are probably off into capacity. There's not a huge space for them to do that kind of thing. So there would certainly be classrooms or working spaces for painting or sketching, but there could also be welding, soldering, computer programs, rocketry programs. It, it could, it doesn't have to be necessarily the arts, it can be arts and sciences. So, you know, I want it to be flexible. What I, what I would hesitate in doing, and I'm kind of letting the cat out of the bag, I want to talk a little bit during roundtable about the sports campus. It's, it can't be a, we can't try to do too many things with it. And one of the messages that I heard from a number of the folks that know a lot about theaters is they said, don't, don't try to build a professional theater within a certain budget, you can't scrimp on these things, and if you, if you are shocked by the sticker price, if it ends up being $50 million, and you think, well, it would be easier to raise 40, the sacrifices that you might make to save that $10 million may make the facility unusable or unfeasible. So it's important to set our bar high and go after that. And one last thing I'm going to add, and this is way over and above what Chris asked me to address, in my recent trip abroad, I met a lady that is the CEO of a nonprofit called Arts Wave in Cincinnati, and what they do is help with fundraising. One of the avenues that she told me about, which I had never thought about, was payroll deduction, like the United Way. Employees at Cardinal Health, Worthington Industries, Wendy's, the Dave Thomas Foundation could make contributions to our arts fund. So that's another avenue of fundraising that I hadn't thought of before, but it's just one more arrow in the quiver.
Andy, I have a question, you know, concerning the feasibility assessments, the feasibility study, the business plan, and that is, you know, how broad you want to make that, that study? In other words, you've, we've mentioned here, should it conclude culture, wellness education? Should it be a multi-use facility? How do you, how do you see the needs assessment? What do you want it to assess? Do you want it to assess all the possible functions, or do you want it to go back and look simply at what was done in the past, which was just a performing arts?
So the, I guess, two things come to mind. One is the consultant that we hire to do this, this isn't going to be their first rodeo. So they know what other facilities around the country are used for, but when we start getting into community outreach, and whether, there's typically a needs assessment or feasibility study component where they're asking the, the residents what they want or if they want it, there's a multicultural component to it. I envision significant open space, more, more or less like a concourse or ring around the main theater that could be used for a cultural display, June 19th, for example. There could be, you know, cultural artifacts that are displayed over that month. So I think I'm learning what I'm learning by talking to people out in the community, and they're telling me what their needs are, and, and I'm just scratching the surface. So I think if we make a concerted effort to actually do a study, we will hear a lot of things that maybe we hadn't thought of. And, and obviously, the more, the more people you touch, the more valuable the resource is to the community.
Thank you, Andy. I, I know we discussed this quite a bit at length at the retreat, and I think I'm certainly in support of exploring this. I think very much like we off, we would do a RFP for a, a, bring us brilliant ideas about what we want to do with a piece of land, the questions will be, we maybe will not be able to imagine the questions until we begin on the journey. So I think I would reaffirm, I think, the conversation and commit that we had at the retreat, that it's worth that first step and to follow your process to do that work and then do the advisory step when and if that group gets that way.
You know, I still wonder if, you know, this couldn't be combined with the, with an art exhibit hall, where you could actually use it, utilize, you know, expand our, because, you know, we are a community that doesn't have a very big art museum compared to Worthington and compared to the rest of them. So, you know, I'm wondering if, and, you know, maybe this occurs behind the art museum, and it's a cascading type of facility where you can have all the cultural arts and, and things you're talking about, the theatrical arts, but also when it's not operational that way, that it ends up being an extension of the art museum, so you could have bigger and better exhibits there. So I was just wondering if, you know, and your thoughts, if you hadn't combined the two of them, we could, one, get rid of the idea that, you know, we, we really need a, maybe a larger art facility, and number two, you're looking for a performing arts program, so, you know, maybe that occurs on the same site, and, you know, I guess I'm just throwing that out, see what you think.
I agree.
Okay.
So I'm going to be the devil's advocate here. So we did these studies in 2015, so in reality, there's, the data's six years old, but we've lost, we have three years of really no data, or what happened. You know, with COVID, everyone's priorities and where their money went and how they're using facilities have changed. So, so if we go to update these, we really only have two years of new data, and I'm just wondering how much that new data is going to assess the current need, and do we, are we going to be able to find out what that current need is, knowing, you know, that we have that lapse, and we don't know where people are, you know, going to spend their money in future years? You know, are they going to want to spend their money on that or be able to spend their money on that? So I just, I'm hesitant. With RFP, it's free, we get free ideas, but we're saying, do we spend $50,000 to update? I'm just wondering how good of data we'll be able to get, is my concern.
I, I think you make a fair point, Amy, but I also think at some point, you, you say, because I, I don't know how long that's going to take to get us back to, you know, like I said before with the labor market, that's another couple of years before that thing's going to really recover. I don't know how much longer you have to wait to get the kind of data that you're talking about, but I think you're right, I think that's, that's the challenge, and I think that is the risk that you take. So do you take that leap of faith and, and take that risk and, and do an RFP and then do some type of, of study to update the feasibility? I don't know how you'd move this forward without taking that leap of faith, is kind of where I'm sitting with it. But you're, you're not wrong at all, is the data's going to be strange and different, because we're in a very different environment today than we were, you know, three years ago, and I, I think that's part of the challenge, and, and whether we want to take part in that challenge or not.
That, that is a really good point, and frankly, I hadn't thought of it. But in thinking about it now, when I was in Italy, I visited Pompeii. They have a theater, and they still have performance, performances there. They had, had performances there a month ago. So it's a timeless concept that we are only slightly on board with. We have a 200-seat theater, and again, I'll, I'll reiterate my, my joke, if I want to go to the theater in Dublin, I put on my sweatpants, I have dinner with my wife high style at Subway, then I walk down the hall and attend a show at seven o'clock. Is that Dublin? That's not how we, how we roll.
So to get to a concurrence on, on what we think here, I'd like to know if council concurs that we should update these feasibility studies, and then secondly, whether or not you want to expand that RFP to, to engage the possibility that it is broader than simply a performing arts center. So can I get a sense of consensus on that? And then hold it off on the advisory group until we get some, yeah. All right, okay.
Because last time, the advisory group that looked at it was CSAC, correct? Are they the ones that evaluated that data? Somebody did, was it?
I don't know. I don't think it was CSAC, no. We, we had a, we had a group of folks between OU and staff, and I think Arts Council and some other folks were involved in, in helping with that process. You might remember we had the OU engagement as well, pretty narrowly defined opportunity, which made it even harder to assess, and I think that's why we wound up, council wound up saying, let's, let's pause this for now, so.
So I think that we do have consensus on moving forward with the feasibility study as recommended, and then broadening it to include the possibility in the, in the feasibility study that it would have more of a multipurpose use, whether that has, it could have some weight.
The clerk and I have locked eyes, and she's given me a yes, she's got it, so-
Are we good?
We'll move forward on that.
All right, great. Next to staff comments?
Yes, just, just one comment tonight. Yes, just, just one comment tonight. Just as another reminder, the 2023-2027 capital improvement program is underway. Staff has been working on, on that. I just want to assure council, we've had ears and eyes open here throughout the year and picking up on some of what we think your needs are and priorities and the like. Hopefully, that will be represented. But I want to make sure you all know to give us any thoughts or consideration that you may have, just you can send that to myself and, and Matt Stifler, and then I'll get it to the appropriate staff to assess and incorporate as part of the analysis. Also, I want you to know that Matt did work with the clerk's office, and they have posted what we have to date in, in the Board PAC library. So if you want to kind of peruse that and give you some ideas of the draft that we're working on right now and, and what's out there. Other than that, unless you have any questions, that's all I have.
Our committee reports. Administrative Committee, Vice Mayor Durison.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Community Development Committee.
Yeah, we met Tuesday on the 21st, and I just want to, quick report is that we were looking at a sign recommendation for our parks, and I, and basically, we've selected a design for, we selected a standard park design, and we felt that the address should be added to all the signs, the address of the existing park, and then also the, the, we should add signage to some of our smaller community parks. That was pretty much as far as we got, and I think we're waiting for something to come back visually for everyone to look at and build on. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Keeler, Finance Committee.
Yeah, so we met last Thursday. Christina joined us virtually, and it, it worked for the most part. So she asked me to keep us on track. We discussed the bed tax grants. You may recall that last year, we had agreed that if events were canceled and funds were unused, we would consider reallocating those. Good news, all the funds that were awarded were, were used. There were no event cancellations, so that's great. We reviewed the TIF districts, and Matt is going to bring back a GIS map with available TIF funds, unencumbered funds, that could be used to make improvements in those particular districts. Finally, we discussed the investment policy. We will have an updated policy brought back to council in early fall. We agreed as a committee anyway to support an RFP process for the investment professional that we would hire to, as a third-party overseer of the investment policy and the portfolio.
Thank you. Public Services Committee, Ms. Cram.
No new updates.
All right. Liaison Reports, Dublin Board of Education. We don't have anything tonight. U.S. 33 Corridor Group.
Yes, thank you. While Andy was off touring Italy, I was, had the good fortune to spend time with the group. Mayor Jody Carney from Plain City hosted the first, their turn from Plain City to host the group, and that was wonderful. Because they were the hosts, what the group has done is ask the host city or the host group to spend more time talking about their particular development area. So we had a great chance to, to look at what is significant development that's happening in Plain City. Just with the current projects underway, when completed, the growth for the population of Plain City is 50% plus, so a significant change in the footprint of that community going forward. Other great news, there's been interest and investment in the historic downtown. After a while of, of not a lot of activity, they're seeing some renewed interest. So the group shared that with us as well. And then finally, I just would comment, they have developed their small staff, a very nice visual tool that because of all of the activity that's going on, to share with their residents in the community, just visually, you know, where the new developments are, what is expected to happen to them, and be able to navigate that. So some really nice tools. So it was a, it was a very nice meeting, and we thank them for the hosting. I can just share briefly that there has been no slowdown, certainly here in Dublin, and for our 33 corridor community as well, that in spite of all the supply chain issues, growth continues to expand and grow. So it was a wonderful meeting. We appreciated the visit, and I believe we're hosting the next meeting, so, thank you.
Anything you want to add to that, Andy? No? Oh, that's right, you were in Italy, but you, and so you probably weren't there for the Logan Union, Champaign County either, right? All right. Dublin Arts Council.
I just want to say that the, the Sunday's at Sioda is going to run from August 14th to October 9th, and it was more or less decided to, to move it back. It might be more successful because a lot of the cities ran summer art programs for this kind of general entertainment, and we decided that we have been a lot more successful by moving the dates back, and we were getting people from, you know, various communities who really appreciated that time slot. And Arts Quilt Alliance is coming and is here June 14th to July 21st as an interesting exhibit. Then if you get a chance, I think you're going to be shocked at, if you go down to the Sioda Park and you see the sculptures that the students made, you're, and the different monsters they put into the park and along the creeks and things, you're going to really be impressed with the sculptural abilities of our students. Really did a wonderful job, so I finally got to see that exhibit, and I thought, wow, we have some really talented young people in our community. Thank you.
Veterans Committee, was there anything to report on that, John? On veterans?
No, veterans, nothing, thank you.
All right. Washington Township.
No new updates.
All right. Mid Ohio Regional Planning Commission.
I would only add, I had the great honor of throwing out the first pitch at the Clippers game on the 14th on behalf of Morpsey. So the great, it was, Morpsey hosted the National Council of Regions that week, and we capped it off with the night at the Clippers, and, and it was a really great conference, and it was a, really a pleasure to be able to represent the city and Morpsey at that event. And relative to the Planning and Zoning Commission, you know, they, they have quite a few hurdles right now. They're, they're navigating some difficult waters, and they're doing a great job, and I encourage you all to keep up with the meeting minutes or the summaries that we all are distributed, all of us, the day after their meetings. And if you have anything you'd like to speak further about, always happy to engage that. Thank you.
Mayor, the important question though is, did she get it across the plate or not?
She did. I was there, and I took great video, and it was a strike. And she stood on the mound.
I'd know better than to ask.
Could you repeat that, Amy, one more time? What was it?
Yes, she, and she stood on the mound, too. She didn't cheat up. She threw it the whole distance.
66 feet, 6 inches.
Yes.
Did you, did you videotape that?
I do. I, I have a very wonderful video of it.
All right. We need to see that. Congratulations.
Well, it was too large, I, it was too large to email, so I had to have to put it on the servers.
Follow me on Twitter. It is available for your viewing pleasure.
Friday night at the movies, we're going to watch your hit, or their own over home play. All right. Council Roundtable, Christina, would you like to start?
Nothing other than to say, I hope that everybody has a very safe and happy Fourth of July.
Just would like to congratulate the chamber, and I think the, the, the big winners were IGS, I believe, of the corporate challenge. Really interesting this year that they added a philanthropic twist to it. And the city did get fourth place, so we'd like to celebrate our, our strong showing. It's hard to keep up with those energy people, but had a great chance to volunteer, and it was really well attended, and it was a lot of fun, and a lot of team building happened for the corporate residents of the city of Dublin as a result of that. And then I'd like to thank the staff for spending Father's Day in, in the Juneteenth celebration, so thank you to that.
Welcome back to this end of the table. Amy?
Okay, so last time, I forgot to thank, I got to attend the Citizens U graduation, and I forgot to thank all of our wonderful citizens who participated in that program. I think it's excellent that they spend nine evenings to learn about our city and encourage more people to do that in the future. That was a nice opportunity to see them graduate from that. I also want to thank staff. I know today, they've been extremely responsive. I had gotten three emails about tree cutting and panic on some of you, and they responded very quickly and have gotten lots of information, so I appreciate that, as they always do, respond quickly, so, thank you.
I've been saving up. I've been away for a while, so I'll start by thanking the folks that came out on Juneteenth. That was Father's Day. We had a great showing, a great ceremony, some very bright young minds from the, the local high schools. I also like to thank the residents that came out on Saturday morning to offer us feedback and input on the art in public places. Tremendous showing. As I mentioned, I spent some time in Italy, and I got to tell you, there's, there's comfort in what you know, and I know Dublin, but I felt really small in Italy. And when I say small, just kind of made me feel like, gosh, we're not really all that. There's opportunity to grow. It's very walkable. I wondered how Italian folks could stay so trim, eating spaghetti and pizza? Well, they walk everywhere. Everything's walkable. And that's kind of a consequence of how that area developed 100,000 years ago, and we had the opportunity to have boundless space and the automobile. But that's kind of come back to haunt us. Our health isn't the greatest. So I, I think encouraging walkability as we move forward, metro center and, and any other areas that we can connect would be very important. Thank you all for supporting the Performing Arts Center so far. I know that it could come to a screeching halt after we get the, the cost and feasibility study back. I, I want to reiterate that it's going to be hard. It's not going to be easy, and it's a, maybe a five to seven-year vision. It's not going to happen overnight. Rome wasn't built in a day. We certainly aren't going to build the Performing Arts Center tomorrow. That being said, I, Scott Dring didn't touch on the sports complex too much tonight, but a few months ago, he brought that concept to us. So I've taken some time to kind of look around the region at what there is to offer. I would encourage all of you to check out a place called Spooky Nook, funky name, Spooky Nook, Champion Mill in Hamilton County. It's a massive facility that's underway right now. And I actually think that we need to pursue that ahead of the Performing Arts Center. And the rationale for doing so is that while I hope to not lean on the city, the taxpayers, the residents for support on the Performing Arts Center, if I could come to you with a $50 million check and a million dollars a year to operate it without any help, I would certainly do that. Most of these facilities do have some help, though. And my thought is, instead of using the current pie, bed tax pie, and carving it up between a Performing Arts Center, the Dublin Arts Council, and Visit Dublin, we grow the pie, make the pie bigger. And one way to do that would be one of these sports complexes. I think we need to take a road trip to Carmel, Indiana. There's so much to see there. They're double our size, but they're very progressive, and some of the things that they have done are tremendous economic development generators. So that's it. Again, thank you, folks, for, for getting behind it, at least for now, and we'll see where this journey takes us. Thanks.
I just want to comment on the noise at, at the Bridge Street, and I have said it pins, and it is, it is crazy with people roaring their engines, going back and forth, and, you know, the one person that wrote in said, you know, we should have speed bumps. I don't know if I agree with the speed bumps, but I don't know if there's a legal way to declare a quiet zone along the front. I talked to residents that have spent a considerable amount of money to live there, and they said, hey, it's really pretty noisy, all the way, carries all the way to the other side of the units. So I don't know what we can do to get that under control, but there seems to be a bunch of people just love to roar their engines in front of that particular edifices and drive up and down, making as much noise as possible, and it's, I think it's very irksome, and it's, we got, have to come up with some kind of program to try to get that under control. Other thing is, I don't know if you had a chance to walk through the farm market at, at Bridge Street? I got to tell you, I was always jealous of Worthington, their farm market. It's awesome. It was huge. It's big. Ours is a lot better. You walk down a central, you can walk down a right side, and it's already all the entire length of Bridge Street, and you come back up the other side. And the other thing is, people are all out walking, their dogs have all makes and models. It's really an interesting morning. You can spend two or three hours there, and, you know, unlike Worthington, you don't have to cross the street, go back and forth, cross all the intersections. This is really well organized and well put together, so if you've got a Saturday morning and you want something fun to do, go down to the farm market and walk through it. You'll be really impressed on what's happened. I mean, compared to the old one we had, this thing's really a great way to spend three or four hours. Thank you.
So I, I asked Andy when he got back, I told him he was going to eat one gelato a day, and he said, no, no, I wouldn't do that. He confessed that he had two gelatos every day, so it sounds like that was a, a great road trip. And I couldn't agree with you more, Andy, that traveling is a, a great mind opener, so I'm glad you had a great trip. I would also like to thank folks for the Juneteenth celebration. It was an honor to be part of that. Thank you very much for the CIAC group who really championed that, along with staff. Kirby and team, thank you very much for your work on that. I will have to echo a little bit about John's point. We, we did hear a lot of the road traffic noise during that, and it was disruptive even to our discussion. And I know everybody knows that, and I know the team is working on that, but it was a loud and clear reminder that, that, you know, with the excitement comes some of those things that we need to work on. Just a couple points additional. Jane and I had the great honor to join the Dave Thomas Foundation for Adoption as they christened and, and did the grand opening for what they are calling their forever home. As you might recall, they started in the Wendy's basement, as they shared, and then outgrew that and went to Worthington, and then outgrew that and came back to Dublin to their forever home. What a wonderful and, and inspiring mission, and that is to place children ages nine and up who are in foster care into their forever homes, and it was just so touching. What they have done in renovation to what is a, a, a more traditional building was awe inspiring about how they're going to use the building to incorporate what their goals are, what their vision and mission, and it was an honor to be there. And they have great plans to continue to grow, and even during a tough time during COVID, fundraising has been very strong for them. So that was an honor, and we appreciate the, the chance to be there. And then for folks, we've talked a lot about parks and activities and walking, and remind people that Wednesday night, we're having a discussion right here in this chamber about the future Parks Master Plan, and I'm looking forward to joining that because I think if you've heard anything from council tonight is that the sky's the limit. So we look forward to hearing the thoughts and, and planning that future master plan, so, thank you, and happy Fourth.
Happy Fourth. I just want to mention that, you, you'll notice on the city calendar that there's quite a few ribbon cuttings and new, new corporations opening and that sort of thing. And one of the things that I'm learning is I've, I had a chance to cut a few ribbons, and I invite anyone, any council member to always come and, and join me in that, is that we are very blessed, and we need to lift up some of the great work of some of the businesses that exist in the city of Dublin. Not only the Dave, Dave Thomas Foundation, but I had an opportunity to talk to the Asian Indian American Business Group, and this group does an amazing amount of community work throughout the city. Andaline Biosciences is the group that come out of Nationwide Children's Hospital that is looking for cures for Duchenne's muscular dystrophy. And then I was at Rev 1 this afternoon for the tour and saw a Dublin And then I was at Rev 1 this afternoon for the tour and saw a Dublin group that is actually developing a algorithm using CAT scans that will help cardiac surgeons to be able to specifically understand the risks that may happen prior to surgery when you do cardiac work. We have some absolutely amazing people here in Dublin and I think that I'm impressed and, and learning about them. And I would suggest that there might be ways that we can begin to kind of open up the envelope and allow some of these butterflies to kind of be apparent to the people that live here because I think that we're proud of so much about Dublin, but some of the organizations and some of these new companies that are rising to the surface are revolutionary, they're changing lives. And I think that we should find ways that we can kind of applaud them and let people know what's happening within the walls of our corporate offices. So I just felt so good about that. There was, there's hope, especially with Andaline Sciences. They are, are working for cures for genetic neuromuscular deformities and we're talking how you could change thousands and thousands of lives across the world and, and I'm just so proud and I know we all are that, that they are here and, and other great companies like that. So remember the blessings we have on the Fourth of July and the freedoms we enjoy and we'll see you all on Monday and this meeting's adjourned.